Good evening and welcome to our 11th meeting of fiscal year 2022. An act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension of the remote meeting provisions. And this meeting will be recorded tonight, it will not be live. And so people who are here probably already know that there's the agenda on the planning board website with the meeting ID, passcode, and all are welcome to attend via Zoom. Let's see. Tim, did you have any updates for us? I'm prepared to just jump right in if.
Yeah, no, no, no updates, except to say that I know that Melinda Collins from the Select Board had wanted to come and offer a few comments. So if we can just, I don't know if we're, you know, it's your call to start with ADUs or memory care, but she did want to comment on ADUs. I don't see her in the participants, but if if we do kind of see her, if we could just kind of pause the action and give her a chance to get her comments in, so she can get back to the Select Board meeting.
Okay. Yes, if you could alert me if you see her, you could even send me a text or just jump in and tell me. I wanted to start with memory care first. So, and.
Yes, hello. Remind you to introduce yourself and the rest of us, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me, Cheryl. And Cheryl, I apologize to Kathleen earlier. I did not see your hand raised. I had been putting my pieces of paper in front of my laptop at times and it was covering my menu. So I just wanted to apologize for that, that I did miss your hand, I think in the last meeting or two. So please don't hesitate to speak up at times like that. Um, yeah, so let's take a moment. And so I'm Jenny Swenson, Chair. Cheryl.
Cheryl Taguas, member.
Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Rich.
Rich Bealer, Secretary.
And Meredith will be joining us a little late this evening as she finishes some business at the Milton Historical Commission meeting, Historic Commission meeting.
Sorry, Danny and Tim, I do see Melinda Collins here.
Thank you. Actually, I would love, if she's ready, I would love to hear from Melinda, because I know she has to get back to our Select Board meeting. Hi, Melinda. Good evening.
Hi, Danny. Thank you so much. It's very nice of you to to try to accommodate me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Well, I'm I'm always happy to be here. And so my name's Melinda Collins, and I want to thank Madam Chair and the Planning Board members, staff and residents. And and also, we always share our addresses. So I love my home at 170 Hillside Street in our wonderful town. I'm here today to speak as the Chair of the Select Board Housing Committee, just to share a little bit about the values that are in the housing production plan that make this so the accessory dwelling unit zoning so important. And I also want to give a special thank you to the Subcommittee for Housing for the Equity and Justice for All Committee, because they worked with Boston University and did a lot of study on needs. And and they they said that ADUs were really important for people and also streamlining permitting processes. So. But before I I deliver my my statement, if we could just pause and take a moment to appreciate all the things that our homes make possible in our lives, I think that's a really important way to start when we're thinking about housing. But you also have a meeting, so I'm going to get started. So this evening, you you have the privilege and the power to offer to others who needed the same possibilities for the good things that we just appreciated for, you know, that nanosecond. And you can do this by moving the article forward to town meeting. So the accessory dwelling unit zoning is an integral component of the town's housing production plan for two reasons. First, it represents our commitment to meeting the social and equity needs of our community. And second, it streamlines the permit approval process and makes it more accessible, predictable, and navigable for residents. Residents have invested in Milton and need that investment return in the form of reduced barriers to meet their family's needs within the confines of their own home. Our building commissioner also finds this streamlined incompatible with making inspectional services more efficient by relieving it of unnecessary operational steps and regulatory burdens. Regulations that govern single-family homes can also regulate the units within them. So there are also direct connections between being housed in a way that meets a family's needs and their health and financial outcomes. Matching housing costs to people's resources allows for better nutrition, health habits, wealth generation, and education. Even in Milton, people are forced to live in poverty or leave and maybe even become homeless, because we need a broader variety of home types to meet a broader variety of needs than is sometimes readily visible in our meetings. I know we have trouble sometimes in in Select Board meetings, sort of seeing all the needs and and all the viewpoints. So, you know, I've spoken with Noreen Dolan, the Funds Coordinator for Milton Residents Fund, and my kids have volunteered at the one of the food pantries and the Equity and Justice Committee has also provided a deeper understanding for us on all those points. So during last week's meeting, I heard and very much appreciated a caring concern that homeowners may not be able to sell homes containing ADUs. And I'd really like to ease this concern, at least for my family. I appreciate having the freedom to weigh the risks and benefits to my family, and I know what's most valuable to my family at any point in time. And I trust the market to price the home according to its desirability at the time of listing, and in the meantime, my family's needs will be met. I could also renovate or rent out the home as well if I choose to wait for a higher offer. The town will have repaid my investment of taxes by trusting me if I chose to add an ADU in a predictable and navigable way that helps me meet my needs. This is a real value added to my life, and I would prize my government even more for its investment in my well-being. The town, fellow residents, and I will all be protected by the permitting process administered by the Building Committee and its staff, who do excellent work, and other town regulations in place for single-family homes, and the Fair Housing Committee as well, should the unit be rented, as I could do with my single-family home in Milton, and actually has been done with a house that I owned in Milton. So there can be no higher purpose in planning than to improve the lives of the broadest population of people through the most efficient use of land. Using an already developed parcel more intensively saves energy, materials, and precious trees and wildlife habitat, which benefits the entire world. And although the number of ADUs produced will likely be as small as in other communities, especially if a cap is employed, they provide a type of naturally affordable home that some residents need for social, emotional, and health support and/or for economic support. The Planning Board and staff have done an excellent and caring job drafting, listening, deliberating, and revising the ADU article. However, it's the legislature that holds the collective wisdom of those represented all across the town. Should the zoning need to be further refined, Town Meeting can and will, because it's happened before, right? We've all experienced that. They can and will send it back to the Planning Board for further consideration of this positive step in fulfilling our commitment to the good things promised in the housing production plan. At the heart of zoning, zoning is an expression of values. And I would like to conclude by expressing, from the unique perspective of a fellow elected official, my deep appreciation for each one of you, as you consider together the values this zoning article will move forward. Thank you very, very much for making time for me and space for me. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for all of the work that you do on all of your committees, including the Select Board and 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 all of your work, Melinda. Thank you for your time and thank you for jumping between meetings to share your your thoughts on this. I know you've given this a lot of thought over the years, so thank you. Thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Have a wonderful night. Bye. Okay. All right. Well, we don't have citizens speak on the agenda. We only have two topics tonight. So I'm hoping that we can just jump in, but it's but maybe I should just double check. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for a cup, two, maybe three minutes on a topic that is not on our agenda tonight? Highland Street Memory Care Zoning or Accessory Dwelling Units? Just double checking. Okay. All right. Then people will be welcome to speak when we get into the topics tonight. Okay, so we can start with memory care. Mr. Cork, and I don't know if you want to, who who you would like to bring in?
I am, well, I see Mike Walrassak is present, who was representing North Bridge, and I see that Rich Fernandez is present as the President of the Hospital. And Tony Chikolo is present also, potentially as the Chair of the Hospital Board.
Okay.
I'm not sure if there's anybody else that needs to be admitted at this point.
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
You would like to give us an update, Mr. Corcoran?
Yeah, I think a quick update, we had a, I think we had a healthy sidewalk on on Sunday with you and Meredith in particular, and some new faces from the neighborhood, which I thought was also a significant. So the people were able to see it and ask questions directly on the site. I've done a couple of things. I know that you and I had a discussion about some lingering concerns about conditions of the property, which I think are not necessarily zoning issues, but I can address quickly if that's helpful. And then what I've done today is submit new versions of the zoning, one in the form that we've been using, which is just keep layering on red line to the the zoning that was in place for the property over on Randolph Avenue. And then I've done a a modified red line of that. I have accepted all of the changes that I think are non, are not a moment. And and prepared to walk through what I think are the 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 last items for discussion. I know that we left off at a point a couple of weeks ago, but I think what remained in that in the document was was process oriented and related. I don't think there were any issues or concerns about any of those. And so we can, I can run through it quickly. I could share my screen if that's helpful. But I do think it'd be more fruitful if we could focus on the issues where there is concern and what we've done to be as responsive as I think we can to those concerns.
Okay, all right. So, yes, hello.
I'm sorry, can I just, I I do think it's important for us to go through the site design standards and the building design standards, because they do set some requirements that kind of work hand in hand with the front section dimensional requirements. So.
I am interested.
I can, I can share my screen and 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 put it up where I where I think, essentially, I think we left off.
Yeah, I I my note said we left off, I think, at eight, number eight, which was the sign section.
So.
I think we completed parking. If anyone had any remaining thoughts on parking, that's fine. But I think we left off the sign.
So here's, here's the sign. I think we essentially, we're looking for, you know, we need a double-sided sign that would be out on Highland Street that would announce the the presence of the location and that we suggest that the sign would be approved by the Planning Board with the advice of the town's Sign Review Committee.
Okay. Um, okay. I I do know that Meredith at a prior meeting had had some thoughts on that. Perhaps we could come back when Meredith joins our meeting, but she had she had mentioned that possibly a residential style similar to the Milton Hospital sign. So but and and she, I think she might have also mentioned, you know, having it set back so it's not in the right of way, similar to the hospital sign.
Isn't that, um, excuse me, Danny, but isn't that under the purview of the Sign Review Committee and not us?
Yeah, I I think it would be under the Planning Board, according to this, but I can see what you're saying, maybe more toward the toward the special.
As the, as the, as the staff person for the Sign Review Committee, the the sign by law that empowers the Sign Review Committee only applies in the Business District. So you're actually not allowed to have signs in residential district, period, and our zoning. So if we do want to allow something like that, you are going to want to kind of put relatively specific requirements for the Sign Review Committee to to follow, if you'd like them to review it. Or, you know, you could just have have it apply to, you know, just say, the same regulations in the Business District or whatever, but you are going to want to be specific about what you want them to be doing.
Yeah, I don't think the Business District signage requirements address this kind of sign. I think we ran into this when we were doing the the Parkway, forget what exactly, the Ice House zoning, where it allowed for a sign, and it was put into the zoning. I think there was a, there may have been a size limit put into that. We can check that.
Yeah, just question, Danny, have we done something similar so that we can, like, so that we don't recreate new language? Is there some language that's already kind of standard elsewhere in the town, like the hospital that we could just adopt or?
Right. That's a good question. We we might be able to have our staff check on that. I think Meredith, Meredith, have you been able to join the meeting?
Yep, just came in.
Oh, good. Hello, Meredith. You didn't miss much. We we started kind of where we picked up, left off. We're we're looking at the sign section number eight in the Memory Clinic Bylaw. And I had remembered you had some ideas of possibly residential style setback, not in the right of way, similar to the hospital.
Right, right.
And I I I just like clarification, maybe from Tim. Tim, are you suggesting that we come up with some specific parameters now, or is this the kind of thing that the Planning Board would work on during special permitting?
Um, I think I'm, I don't, I I'd have to think about that, actually. And I think, I think, I think the direction that Rich is going in is a, will be hopefully a fruitful one, where we can see how this is treated in other zoning. We may also look to other approvals, but I do, I do think that, you know, the when I say specific, I I just mean if you're going to ask the Sign Review Committee to look at something, it's good to give them a little bit of correction, but that can all, that direction can also come in the in the special permit. But, you know, just to sort of give people understanding of what we're thinking of.
I would just, I would just point out that the the language that was drafted by the Board in 2013 relative to the other does provide for, that's, some of the language is strict, and but it would say with consent of the land or such size and construction and upon such terms as may be specified and approved by the Planning Board. Actually, it was the signs, Town Sign Review Committee would have the only authority in that in that case. In this case, I'm suggesting that the Planning Board ought to have the approval rights with the consent and advice of the Review Committee, but.
So I I like the language personally. I'm interested to hear what others think of that language that Ned provided. And I would love to, you know, put a pin in it and allow our town staff a little bit of time to just see if there's some great language at their fingertips somewhere to just add any anything clarifying about size or just, just a couple of parameters that we might like to add. But it's, it's, it's a small thing to put a pin in. But please.
I do like that language. And it was sort of like when Walcott Woods came to us and had a very attractive, you know, entryway and their signage coming in. We were able to approve it easily.
Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe we could look up any language around the Walcott Woods sign. That's a great idea. That is a nice sign.
The only, Danny, the only thing I'd add there is, yeah, I I like that as well. And that's kind of where I was going. I I guess my overall thinking is if it wasn't something we were going to look back and find somewhere that we would consider this could happen again, let's like put some thought into how it's written so that it can be used again and not just, you know, because you hear a lot, the folks that have to, you know, you know, go out and make the commissioner, you know, people that have to go out there and make sure this is, that all fits, fits the rules. I'm blanking. I'm sorry.
Right, right. You don't want to.
Yeah, I don't want 17, yeah, we don't want to find out that we create this law six different ways, depending on which project it is. So let's have some kind of a standard, you know, that's, I guess that's all I'm saying.
I I love the idea of a standard. So thank you. That's a great point. And I like the idea of looking back at something like the Walcott Woods. Kathleen, Cheryl, did you want to weigh in on that?
No, that's fine.
Great. Okay. All right. Utilities, number nine. Let's see.
So the only change, so that deals with the fact that there shall be utilities, electric, gas, telephone, water, et cetera. Comply with, in stormwater, comply with applicable provisions of the DEPs, Stormwater Management Guidelines and Regulations, and the Town's Stormwater Bylaw. Installation utilities meet all requirements of the Town's Public Works, and I remove the language that will be central heating and air conditioning shall be used are practical, because that's a building issue. It's really not a zoning issue.
Well, the interesting thing about that is if you were to use a system which was like you find in hotels, for example, where it's a window unit, then you are creating a design feature, because it's at every single window. And a potential noise issue, whereas a central.
Put it back in. It's going to have central air. I can, I can.
Because I've, having looked into those kinds of systems that are used in hotels, they they can be challenging aesthetically. So I would suggest if we're can, if it's, if you're planning to put a central in, let's leave that language in.
Happy to, happy to do that.
Thank you. Good, good catch. Anyone else on utilities?
Hello, can I just say one quick thing?
Oh, yes. Hello. Teresa O'Brien, nice to see you.
You guys. So I just wanted to bring up again, I really hope that the sewer, I'm guessing that would be part of utilities, is with Winter Valley, and it's not connected on Spafford.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we can get an update from Mr. Corcoran.
Our engineers are talking to Winter Valley's engineers about the feasibility of doing that. Winter Valley is willing to accommodate it as long as it can be managed and physically done. So we're doing, we're doing a feasibility analysis. We're going to evaluate the existing capacity of the Winter Valley system. Winter Valley is building a new 36-unit building that will be tying into its own system. So they're obviously concerned that we would be overcharging their system, but we've made a commitment to the neighborhood. We've made a commitment to this board that we would move forward with Winter Valley if it's possible to do so.
Okay, and to sort of.
I don't think from a zoning perspective.
It shouldn't be in the zoning. It shouldn't be in the zoning. It's a condition of the property when the application gets filed.
Right. I just, I I don't know if there's, I I got some reassurance when I was on the sidewalk, and I don't know if it was Ned or somebody may have said, well, if there's no sewer capacity in Winter Valley and there's no sewer capacity on Spafford, then it's the, you you just don't have a project. But in other words, you, there's got, there's going to be capacity in one or the other, and and then, and then that's.
Right, right. But but that sort of goes to the issue of the fact that we always apparently designed zoning for a specific piece of property. But this one, this is just the zoning. And so.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, I'm just asking for confirmation from Mr. Corcoran. In other words, I don't want the neighbors to worry. If there's no capacity on Spafford, then they're not going to be blown blown away. It's, if that's the case.
Yeah, the thing that I would say, Danny, is that this language protects against a private sewer system on site, because it says you have to be connected to town water and sewer. So I I would say that that is something. So in other words, like, if you didn't have capacity in the street, it doesn't mean necessarily that you don't have a project. It means that you have to design your own sewer treatment facility for the for the property. But this is already saying it has, it shall be connected to water, to town water and sewer. So do you see, so we, so that.
One of two ways, we can tie into Winter Valleys, which is connected to town sewer, or we can tie into Spafford Street. And we have to do, from engineering and feasibility analysis, we'll have to do what needs to be done in either case. And that's, that's the best I can say, other than that we are committed and have started a process of evaluation with Winter Valley, so that if it's possible, we can tie into Winter Valley. We understand completely why it is a preference. We don't want to have to rip up Cross Highland Street, rip up Spafford Road to tie into what's there on Spafford Road. We'd rather go the other way. And it, there's a lot of reasons why it makes sense to do so, and we're pushing hard to try and get there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Okay, and did anybody else have any thoughts or questions or comments on utilities, number nine?
No.
Okay. Okay, 10. Do you want to lead this discussion, Cheryl?
Yes, this is, I think I mentioned last time or one of, at one of our meetings, I pulled out site design standards as separate from building design standards. And I largely base this on the Greater Estates Section of zoning, which I worked on as well. So, you know, when I mentioned earlier that there's some standards in here that would affect the design and what some of the other things we're talking about, such as height, is like, I think it's this whole topic of moving earth, so our cut and fill retaining walls is the first one. So this gives us a standard to refer back to when we're reviewing a special permit application down the road. So I I think we go to the number B there, also about preserving existing significant trees and growth of trees and other natural features, which is something that we usually ask for, but now we're making it clear by putting it in as a standard. The driveway, the layout, also to avoid extreme cut and fill. You know, the Greater Estates PUD was largely written around the Walcott Woods project, which had roadways that were requiring cut and fill. And this one, this property requires it as well. So this gives us, again, some standard to work towards. And then D. You know, this is set back quite a bit from the the street view, but it is something when the trees are defoliated, it may very well be visible, but it'll certainly be visible from the, from the neighbors. And then being compatible with terrain and features of the surrounding land. I mean, this is again getting to what is that existing property? And how do you design for the property rather than bringing in something and just shoehorning, shoehorning it in? And then F, again, the parking has to work with the topography and the landscaping as well. And the overall. Uh, and the overall site design. The sustainable design practices and G, I mean, this is something I think that we've talked about more, um, low impact uh, design for site in terms of, um, employing, uh, less structures if possible. And I know the town engineer is interested in this as well. So I think I look forward to that discussion and the application. Here, H, landscaping is be designed by landscape architects. I personally find it frustrating when landscape plants are designed by civil engineer. It's like, uh.
I'll mention that the next time I lecture, then in January.
Not that I dislike civil engineers, but it's a little out of their real house to do the landscaping. I'm sorry, Danny, did you want to say something while I'm going through this? Do I see your hand there? Oh, I, no, I didn't mean to have me. I'm sorry. I just assumed somebody would interrupt if they wanted to interrupt. Oh, do you know what I wanted to do? I just wanted to bring Mr. Henry to the table. I, I forgot to include him. Uh, Mr. Henry, Henry, you, you are also pleased to chime in. Look, carry on, carry on. Okay. So the, um, we talked about landscaping. So, I mean, there'll be a lot of discussion about that when the time comes, but I think we're pretty clear that that's important to us here. And then, um, in I, uh, again, looking at the design of the driveways, the walkways and sidewalks. So it does say sidewalks. I know we had some discussion about that before. Um, I think if we wanted to make that more explicit elsewhere in the, in the zoning, we could, we could do that under the driveways and access section. But, um, you know, what are the materials? What's the curving, et cetera? Um, it will be covered there. And then, um, J would be the, uh, screening of parking areas. Um, you know, so that you don't have large expanses of pavement without any relief. Um, and that refers then to the section of our bylaw that's more, uh, that applies to other districts too. And that's that section seven H. That's where it covers the parking areas in design. Um, K is dumpster enclosure. Uh, so it's screened. Um, uh, uh, L gives us some flexibility. So we, I think it's important where these are standards that we have some flexibility and not need a or a change in the zoning or a variance if there's some good reason that, that one of these can't be complied with. Um, so those are the site design standards. Thank you for walking us through that, um. Oh, Mr. Henry.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a couple of comments on this section if I can. Uh, one is that in the driveway, either in ten C or ten I, which deals with driveways and, and accessways, I think it would be nice to include, which I put in my letter earlier that the access roadways would, you know, have sidewalks and comply with state fire requi, all state fire requirements and the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Architectural Access Board, um, requirements. And I, I think I wasn't on the sidewalk on Sunday, but I, I understood that North Bridge was willing to put in sidewalks and to do a swept path analysis of the access into the property. If that's the case, I think we should make that a requirement to make sure that the safe, is a safe access for fire equipment uh, from Highland Street into this property. So I think those could be included in this site design standard section.
One thing I would say, um, you know, Mr. Henry, like the Mass Architectural Access Board requirements are, those are building, um, code requirements as well. So one thing would be, you know, by putting it in the zoning, are we, um, we have an opportunity with those, uh, standards or requirements change over time because our zoning needs to change. Uh, the fire code would be the same thing. Um, so if we, you know, these, the, the site and these buildings will have to be designed to all applicable codes, building, fire, access, et cetera. Um, so I, I guess I would maybe ask, Tim to, to maybe weigh in a little bit on whether.
Can I speak to that first, Cheryl? Because the deletion of that language on NFPA and and ADA was done by me in the review that I did. Um, on the general theory that I don't like to list some requirements and not, you know, all of them because you do a list and you leave something out, but then there's a, there's a hole that, um, that, uh, causes a problem. So I thought that it was better language to just say you're gonna have to build it in compliance with all applicable rules and regulations without naming anything in particular. I just said, just seen a case that was done in Down and Hull where, you know, they listed a bunch of things and they left something out. And so the guy got away with it. So I think you're better off to be more general than, than being specific. And if we have to comply with those rules and reg, they have to comply with those rules and regulations anyway, I don't think that it belongs in the zoning. But that's, you know, I said, that's my view of it. And so I was.
Kathleen is, is there language in here now that's requires compliance with all applicable regulations?
I put it in where, when I took out NFPA and the architectural accident, you know, access, I said, well, compliance with all rules, applicable rules and regulations.
Do you know what section you're talking about?
I don't think that's in this because that's a, that's comment to a later version. Comment that, that, that Kathleen had provided that was post the
Last meeting.
The last meeting. So that's some language that appears in the new draft.
Okay.
Which I submitted today, um, but it's not, um, it's, it's, it's not in this, it's not in the, in the version that we were looking at before. I don't think.
But that it goes to answer Doug's question is that, that's what I put in instead, in the.
Right. So, so can you just clarify which section that is? Fall in ten C, in ten, ten C and ten I?
I'd have to go to see what got sent today.
We're gonna go look at that, right, though? We're gonna get.
Yeah, we're gonna go back. Oh, we're gonna start over with the new version.
I think it was in section six under driveways and access.
Oh, okay.
Well, anyways, it, it, I, I think that this needs to have a requirement that it's done and I, and I understand Kathleen, the issue, if you cite a specific, uh, regulation that then changes, you can draft a language to say then in effect, but you don't want to have to old building codes referenced in, uh, you know, a new zoning project. But I, I think there has to be some statement in here that will be done in compliance with all such laws. If it's, if it's broader, that's better for me. I'm okay with that. I had one other point in this section and that has to do with, um, the landscaping and screening, which I think is ten H. And as my client is very close to the property, um, i- it's, it's one thing to install these, um, trees, but it's another thing to maintain them going forward. And we'd like to see language in here that requires whatever gets installed as far as is planned to be maintained. And if they don't take, they get replaced. Um, because if it, if you plant these all and a year later they all die, my, my client's looking at a fifty thousand square foot building with no screening.
Yeah, but that's something I would put into the permit, not into the zoning. You know, I mean, zoning should be broader. And the permit should be concluding language that talks about maintenance. And I totally get that and I totally believe it. And I've seen it, I've put it in a bunch of permits.
We've done it here too.
And, yeah, I would also point out that later on, the, one of the plans that has to be submitted as an operations and maintenance plan, that has, so anything to do with maintenance of the property, maintenance of the building with respect to the zoning, has to be within that. And that's certainly under the review and approval of the, of the board as part of its, a part of its review with the special permit process.
Well, I, I just want to make sure the board has the power under these guidelines to in, insert that condition. That's my.
Totally. I think we have the, the right to do that in anything without even having it in the zone.
I, I, I do understand though, because I, I mean, that, um, that screening wall is part of the design. And I, I some, sometimes if, if you don't have it in the zoning, later on, when you're in the permitting or special permitting phase, it, you, the, the, you get pushed back because they say what basis?
Um, I think that's only because of the way we drafted the historical drafting here, but, um, I hear your point.
Um, so, uh, we say it shall be included in the landscape design and, I mean, can we, can we add maintenance? Uh, hold on, I'm gonna.
I think it says upon installation and thereafter. And thereafter means an ongoing.
So, uh, upon installation and maintenance thereafter? Um, no.
Yeah, that works.
You could add m- maintenance thereafter. Mr. Henry, does that cover your?
Well, I, I, I think if you add that and then in, in section twelve, where, where the operations and maintenance plan is, is listed, that if you say that the operations and maintenance plan will include maintenance of any landscaping on the property. Because I think the way it's drafted now, it's, it doesn't necessarily include that.
Okay. Are you under number twelve, you said?
I think, I think it was thirteen, um, it's at the very end is the O and M plan. So I think it's section. I guess it's, it's twelve, um, twelve V is the O and M plan.
Okay, twelve V, an operations management plan providing for safe and convenient operations and minimizing negative impacts of the use of dumpsters and of deliveries to the K L R D.
Broader.
Water, right, right, Doug. Yeah. So the operations management plan right now is, is really limited to just deliveries and.
About, um, about, um, hundred twelve U, where we might say a tree preservation and maintenance plan. We have a tree preservation plan. Could be a tree preservation and.
And landscape maintenance plan. If you put it in there.
Yep.
About that.
Yeah.
How's that, Mr. Henry?
That works.
Okay. Thank you. Glad we brought you to the table.
Shall I go back up to ten? Or do we move to eleven?
Um, ten, um. Any more comments on ten, Mr. Henry?
It just, I, I just, I want to see the, if we're not gonna have specifics to ADA and fire, I, this should be just a general statement, which I think Kathleen put in one of her drafts, which I don't think is here now. That the project will be built in compliance with all applicable.
I did, I put it under driveways and access in, um, number, I'm just finding it on the thing I sent to, it's way back in number, uh. Six.
When I pull, when we pull up the, the next by law, uh, the next iteration that I submitted today, I can.
Okay.
It's a number six, uh, Mr. Henry. So I just crossed out, you know, compliance with NFPA and the Architectural Access and Board and just put in all applicable rules and regulations.
So, uh, Mr. Henry, if it's okay, we're gonna push through the rest and then we're gonna go start on the new version and hopefully get to number six. Sorry.
Draft that I submitted at, that, that general language isn't there. So we make, should make a note. And when we get there, we should incorporate that language.
Okay. Okay, Kathleen has it handy, I hope. Um, okay, let's carry on. If, if nobody else has any more comments on section ten. Not seeing any hands. And, okay, so we're gonna go on to eleven, um, building design standards. You want me to run through that, Danny? Um, you're welcome to. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Um, so again, these are more specific to the building, uh, you know, some of these are pretty sort of general in a sense, but the the overall scale of the building, its massing and form, uh, then it relate to its context and to its site in terms of uh, topography, et cetera. And then that the facades all are given equal treatment. There's nothing that's treated as sort of a back with different materials and design characteristics. That's the first one. And then the B deals with the scale about, um, being broken down, if you will, so that it's not just a box. Um, and then, uh, noting that variations uh, would be such that it would make it inviting and provide a human scale. Um, so those can sound rather vague, but I think we all have a general idea of how to apply those. Um, C, um, you know, making the, the primary building entrance distinctive. D, um, having windows with, um, not just punched in with as minimal detail as possible, but having some surrounds and setting them off from the plane of the facade. Um, here's the note about the vents or grills for air conditioner units incorporated into the architecture. That's, um, maybe we don't need that any longer if we're, if we're requiring a central system. But, um, that's, you know, more detailed. So we've worked our way from the overall scale to breaking down the scale, to defining the entrance, to defining what some of the character of the window and door surrounds are gonna be. And then, um, E, um, again, kind of providing, uh, some guidance to having groupings of windows. Um, some windows that are not, uh, too small, that they look out of character with the rest of the, of the facade. F, um, having exterior feat, uh, extra light fixtures that are appropriate to the design of the building, but also dark sky compliant. Uh, G, um, having an encouragement of pitch throughs, but we know with buildings of this type that the interior sections of these are likely to be flat and have mechanical equipment that's masked by the slope. So I think, um, here what we're looking for is to have the roof lines, um, make sense with the overall design of the building. And then H, the, addresses the materials, um. I think again, where we had conversations about the gutter school and the kinds of materials, we have to be mindful of kind of maintenance, the kind of, uh, that materials can bring with them. Um, and that they, that this is a commercial building and we want to make sure that, uh, uh, we don't require materials that, um, impose a burden for maintenance. Uh, and then I, um, again, sort of not having, um, unreleased flat surfaces on the facade. So having some, a relief in the way they, um, maybe there's bays or porches or other architectural features that can bring some, uh, relief to flatness of a facade. J, um, requires that the accessory structures be designed in a compatible way with the main building. And then K is that, uh, mechanical equipment be visually screened and have sound buffer. Um, so that the, uh, you know, sound that travels off site is, is limited. Um, can be placed on the roof in those walls I just mentioned before. Um, on, I'm sorry, I just thought of something from the sidewalk on, on K, the compressors and the mechanical equipment. Um, when we were on the sidewalk, I, I, I learned that the, um, that, that sort of equipment that goes on the top of the roof would be going in the buildings the furthest away from the Bacardi property. Um, they, they, because they can go in the main larger buildings. Um, I, I thought that that was a good, a, 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 a good thing. Um, is that something? Well, I don't know that it's engineered yet, but my experience has been that if you're gonna have like three pods or three wings, that you might have three, um, sections of equipment, um, even if you have more centralized, um, you know, I, I think that's something that we should leave open for discussion during the special permit process when they have an engineer, mechanical engineer on board unless they know what they've done in other buildings and that's all consolidated into one small area. Um, but there's definitely gonna be different zones for these. Um, with, so I, I'd be surprised if you wouldn't have some separate equipment.
I had a question on, um, just back in the landscape on N, the, regarding the parking areas for residents, and I'm thinking. regarding the parking areas for residents, and I'm thinking of this just in a general area that it might not be buffered, a project could possibly not be buffered with vegetation as densely as what we have here. Why? Why did we decide to take that?
That language is just moved from, that language was moved from this location to which deals with buildings to the other sections that deals with site.
Great, perfect.
The language didn't go away, it just got relocated.
Thank you.
Okay, so did that answer, Danny, on the mechanical?
Yeah, the only the only thing that I'm trying to think about there is that we've been trying to keep the height away from that side of the property for obvious reasons, and that was one other area of height that we wanted to keep away from the one of butter, really. I mean, the, you know, the one person that lives the closest to it.
When we get the application, that's a conversation that can be held at that point.
Well, I guess what we could do, if you wanted to be more specific, is you can say that, I mean, again, if this equipment is not designed, a central system, you know, really kind of dictates the kind of equipment, but you know, if that were to change, let's say there's a generator that they want to put in, and you know, that those can be noisy. But you might say is that that kind of equipment can't be located within a certain distance of a residential butter, or something like that. So that that covers it.
No, like, as I said, I I hate to, as I say, I hate to see, say this all the time, but that's something that can be put in as a condition for the permit. I don't think it belongs in the zoning. You know, because you don't, you don't even have an idea about what they're what they're going to be building.
Yeah, but these are, these are more design standards. We already have a lot of design standards, like this is what the mechanical equipment can go in a well in the roof. I don't know the how that that's.
How many other, how many other zoning sections of the zoning code do we have that we talk about that?
Well, great estates, for sure. I mean, I guess what I'm saying, what I'm saying is not too too different than what we have here already. So it's a greater sort of, your your question is a bigger question, do design standards belong here? And I I think because we don't have design standards elsewhere, that we've been putting them into a specific section. Whether that's the best approach or not, that's another story. You know, but I think they belong some, they belong with something like this, so for the time being, until we revamp the whole zoning code.
Or our rules and regulations, there you go.
This this proposal does have already certain, you know, provisions such as height near residential properties that the developers put in to minimize impact on the closest residential side, so I don't think saying to the extent practical, you should locate what equipment farthest away from residential butters is inappropriate. I think it's a general standard, it doesn't have to, it doesn't necessarily mean it's site design for this, but it's a it's a good practice.
I think that's reasonable language to to add here.
Okay, so you want to take a crack at that for next time? Yes, thank you. Thank you. Equipment. Farthest away.
So L is on sustainable building practices. I I actually would like for us to think about that as a broader apply across more than this kind of zoning to be more specific, but I think here we don't really have anything more specific. We've talked about whether something should be weed certified and things like that, but I I really think that it would be not smart to just put it here and not address it elsewhere more broadly. So I think just making an encouragement of it at the moment is what we should do for L. And then for M, it gives us the flexibility again to have some discretion with these standards. Just like for the site. And that discretion that we also did in Milton Village Mixed Use Overlay, which is the other place we have standards besides great states. A lot of, and then some of these might actually be there, too. They're a little more specific to that location, I look at both, I'm sure.
Mr. Corcoran, for J, I think we had talked about limiting the number footprint and placement. Is that in the new version?
I'm sorry, for what?
It's in setbacks, Danny.
Yeah, the accessory.
Is in, it's 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 in the newest newest version in the area dealing with setbacks.
Okay.
Section four, I think.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. Does anyone have any other comments in section 11?
I just had one comment in that the the landscaping piece that got taken out here, because I think Cheryl put in two different standards had 15-foot tall trees, and I think the current one is 10-foot tall trees, and I'm wondering why we went from 15 to 10 on the buffer trees.
I don't recall having made a choice to do that, Mr. Henry, so. But it is.
I don't remember 15 feet.
Yeah, it was in what was crossed out on.
Yeah, it is. I've I've got it in front of me, right. It was, yeah, the landscape, the whole paragraph on landscaping.
So I had originally at 15.
Yeah, it says 15. Can we go back to 15?
It's 11, 11, 11.
You just scroll past it.
It's down, down, yeah.
So 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 I I think I think if you go back to 10 H and change 10 to 15, and you get back to where it was.
Yeah, so it was in in when it was in L, it was 15 feet. When you moved it to H, it dropped down to 10.
I don't remember conscious decisions to do that, so sorry.
So we're changing 10 H to 15? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving to
All right, so.
Cheryl, again, or do you want me to take over?
Please take over, 12, special permit application. Did anyone have any comments on section 12?
No.
No?
I think we already made the one comment on the O and M plan for trees, which is in the section.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Cheryl, I think to to Mr. Henry's point earlier, I think if you want to do something like a swept path analysis or an auto return test or something, I think this would be the the place to do it. I may suggest kind of more general language, just because you know, auto turn is the way it usually is done and probably will be in, you know, however many years or months this zoning is exercised, but you may just want to say some type of materials that prove safe vehicular movements in and out of the site or whatever.
Okay, so are you in O? Are you in 12 O? I see traffic impact study with geographic functional scope.
I think you could do a fire truck and vehicle access plan, because then maybe that gets to the auto turn a little more specifically. That's what I was thinking, Tim, when you were speaking.
Okay, fire truck and vehicle access. And and that would be throughout the site, so it'd be entry, egress, and throughout the site.
Yeah, I was just calling an access, what we can call an access and maneuverability plan.
Yeah.
A little more.
Yeah, because we don't really care about whether they can get into the back, because might why just limit it to where the building's going to be.
Yeah, if it's a fire truck, they're gonna wanna, I mean, fire department's gonna wanna make sure they can access it, but I guess they've already reviewed it, but I think that the primary concern was getting to the site, right, but.
Entry egress and throughout the site. So it'd be entry, egress, and throughout the site, and maneuverability throughout the site. You got that? Ned?
I I do, I'm making a note to assert that, and that would be a new plan.
Yeah, I think the one other thing I would say is the lighting plan should include, yeah, it does include photometric, okay.
So you're looking from, we'll review what it says in the lighting.
Yeah, it does say photometric, so I was just double checking.
Okay. All right, did did we want to talk about affordability? I did not have any notes there.
I did.
Okay.
Because I was concerned that the planning board wouldn't really be the best place to make determinations on compliance with affordability.
Kathleen, with this neck, I want to be the affordable housing trust rather than the committee?
Yes.
So the this language would need to be revised from committee to trust. That's who's been reviewing the the units that are being produced under other special permits. The affordable housing trust.
I just I just said the wrong.
Yeah, okay.
Make that change.
Anything else on the affordability section?
No, as I said, that was the only thing is is that I just didn't think that we were the right place for that, so.
Okay, great. So 14, application review fees, I didn't have any comments. Did anybody? Notice procedures and standards for design decision, sorry, decision. Did anyone have any comments there? Oh, Mr. Henry, your hand is raised, I'm sorry.
No, I think it, I think it was raised before, so.
Okay, all right, okay, so we have taken our first pass. We have a lot of pins to go back for next time. But we are at 8:30, and we promised we would wrap up at 9:30 tonight. And I see we have a lot of participants tonight on for our next topic. So.
Don't you think any of those participants are on for this one?
Oh, I'm sure they are. I'm sure there's some crossover, too, and I'm sure there's there's, we have 30, I'm sure there's a bunch for this topic, too. But I was thinking we should probably we should probably switch to ADU and then start with Ned's updated version at our next meeting.
Danny, just to kind of map this out.
We have time, do we?
We've got, we've got, we've got a meeting on the 23rd. The only, the, well, not the only thing, the major thing on the agenda is the continued 440 granted AV hearing. There there hopefully will be time to kind of talk about zoning. But if we want to be able to, I I believe the select board is trying to close the warrant on December 8th.
December 2, tonight, Tim.
December 2, well. Either we were never going to make that deadline. But we do, we do need to have a public hearing on whatever zoning articles the planning board chooses to put forward. And we've got to have language set for those articles when an advertisement runs in the newspaper. So we're going to have a public hearing at the planning board's second December meeting, which is the 16th. We would need to run an ad in the Milton Times on the 9th and the 2nd. Which means, I mean, essentially, unless the board wants to have another meeting, you know, before November 29th. The 23rd needs to be the day where the board decides this is kind of the language that we're going to discuss in the public hearing. So just, I mean, I that may not be inconsistent with the sort of wrapping up right now, but I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of where this needs to be situated in the schedule.
Danny, can I take five minutes on a couple of the things that were added in this most recent, so we can at least have folks thinking about them? And that would be the FAR and the lot coverage.
Okay, so before we, before we do that, I think I I think we, I think we just need that one last pass on the 23rd. I don't think it's that much. Ned, do you have a sense of, I mean, I think it's just Ned went and incorporated the changes that we discussed, and we're just going to be going over them. Is that right?
I wanted to make two more changes to the front, Danny, though.
Oh, okay.
And I just want to have a time to do it so that we can hear it tonight, rather than just hear it for the first time on the 23rd, if that's okay.
Sure, yeah.
And if I, if I may just put in 10 seconds, I did submit a new draft that accepted most of the provisions that I think were acceptable. Now, there were some edits that have to be added in based on what we heard tonight at the back half. But what's, I've now put up in front of you is sort of the new version, one, you know, for changing the name to specifically get at the issue of memory care, because that was, that's consistent with what we've been representing and this definitional stuff in there. Increase the minimum lot area of the sort of buildable lot to 200,000 square feet, that's responsive to the question that we've heard. There is provision for FAR and lot coverage that Cheryl was gonna raise, and so there were some, there are some things here. I think that what remains is relatively small number of items. They are, they do need to be discussed and considered, and whether we do it this evening or or first out of the box on on the 23rd, you know, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Please, please continue, Cheryl, quickly.
Okay, on the, in section four, there's a provision, it's a, and I think I suggested that these be added, where a lot coverage, and it's in the draft that we received at 20%. And I did a calculation. The current footprint of the building would have a coverage of 14%. And an increase of to up to 20% to me is too great. I'd like to suggest that that number instead of 20%, be 15 to 16%. And I can run through the math if you'd like, but I just want to at least put that out. And then also on the floor area ratio, the existing, the 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 building of the size as proposed right now would be an FAR of 21%, and this is 25%. Again, I think that's too much leeway for something to be, these two things would be allow for a much larger building, in my view. So I'd like that 25% to be 23%.
And again, I really, I don't think we should be that's that's specific. I'd like a rounder number, so it doesn't, you know, we don't fall into situation where it looks like there's only one piece of property in the planet that can be used for this site.
No, but but but, but what you're talking about, for example, is if you say that you're going to have an FAR of 21%, that's a 56,000 square foot building. And if you're allowing an FAR of 25%, I'll do the math right now. I have it all in front of me. 263 allows a building of 65,750 square feet. So we think we're talking about a building of 56,000, and this would allow a building of 65,750. So I think it is a big deal.
I like your change, Cheryl.
And the same thing for the coverage, how big the footprint is.
I think we're happy to live with that.
Okay.
I agree, yeah, that's right.
Thank you, and Rich?
Yep, yep, makes sense, sorry.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, all right, did you have anything else, Cheryl?
No, those are the two things I wanted to point out, because we spent some time talking about things that control the size of the building. And I think those, the other things we've already talked about.
There is a provision, there is one other provision, and he talks about accessory buildings, location of accessory building setbacks. There is a provision, there is one other provision, and he had talks about accessory buildings, location of accessory building setbacks. Allowing a gazebo and that type of thing, so we can get into the specifics of that, but that's responsive again to concerns that we've heard about what about an accessory building, what is it, where would it be located, what kind of setback and treatment, et cetera, so that's here.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, thank you, if you could help us by incorporating everything we've gone over tonight and getting it to us as soon as possible so we can be well-read for our next meeting, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'm happy to do that.
Oh, thank you so much, okay. Well, thank you, and, and thank you, thank you, uh, North Bridge team and Mr. Henry.
Someone has their hand raised there.
Hi.
Oh, someone has their hand raised, thank you for telling me, let me check here. Um, let's see.
She's raising her hand physically, but she has.
Hello.
Oh, okay.
Raise my hand button on the.
I'm holding a baby in the other hand, I can't reach the button. Navy and Hannah, number eleven Stafford Road, and nice to see you again, Denny and Meredith and Ned. I had a question just regarding, this is the first time I'm looking at the paperwork, regarding the traffic impact study. Is that something that is specific to the site on Highland Ave or are you looking, you know, obviously being a resident of Stafford Road, we're greatly concerned with our existing traffic patterns and now additional, you know, influx of vehicles that'll be coming through our street. Uh, is this something that you're looking to also kind of give us some awareness uh on regarding our impact?
Language says that the, the, the top, the, the parameters of the study would be approved by the board um, in advance of the completion of the study, so we would have to, whatever the concerns are, we'll have to address the issues that are raised and certainly would be addressed by the board.
And, and that would be done during the special permit phase?
That's right, that's right. Then one of the deliverables would be a traffic study that is, that conforms to the parameters that the board has laid out. So before we would do the, before we would finalize the study, we'd come back to the board with a present, with, with a discussion as to what the scope of that study needs to look like. Um, and then it would be responsive to that scope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, and, um, I noticed, um, we have another hand raised. Um, thank you, I, I, I'm not sure the name, it's Ian, E A N D J. You're welcome to join us. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can.
Yeah, this is Jean Irwin, I apologize, I've had my hand raised for a long, long time and then I forgot my question, so I'll just bring it up next, sorry.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Irwin, have a good night. Okay, do we have anyone else who wants to speak on the memory care? Um, tonight, we will be having another meeting and then we'll be having a public hearing in December, I think December sixteenth. Um, but, um, no one else tonight, great, thank you so much, everyone, for helping us um, get through that topic, okay, so now we are going to talk about the accessory dwelling unit by law. And I will turn it over to Kathleen and to tell us about her updates.
Um, so the, there were some, uh, there's been some iteration of the bylaw that I sent around uh, through Tim, um, in preparation for the last meeting. Um, we held off, I held off on making any other changes to it because I was waiting for Tim to meet with the building commissioner and, um, and that has been done. I'm looking for the input from the building commissioner, um, and so I, whether, I think maybe Tim should step in perhaps with a staff update on the this conversation? Or not?
Yeah, if you can just give me thirty seconds to bring that email up. And I can kind of review the, the notes, um, from from my conversation with, with Joe Prodeck.
While you do that, I'll just sort of say that in, since the last draft that you all looked at, I did in fact put in a cap of ten building permits for these units, um, in a year. Um, and so, um, that language, which has been included in the draft, and, uh, and it's, and it's building permits, it's not applications. Uh, because I'm keeping the general theory of the fact that you could do an internal ADU in-house without requiring a special permit. Special permit would be required only for an external ADU. And so, um, the idea of limiting ten applications wouldn't work because of the fact that we are allowing internal, the, the draft proposes internal ADUs as a, as a matter of right. Um, that just needs a building permit from the building commissioner. Um, so I wanted to thank, um, Melinda for her support of the, of the ADU bylaw. Also wanted to thank Tim for spending the time talking to the building commissioner, thanking the building commissioner. And I also would like to thank Alex Whiteside for the extensive comments that he submitted. Um, those were very interesting and helpful. Um, and, uh, you know, but unfortunately, Mr. Whiteside and I have a sort of a philosophical disagreement about the special permit, the need for special permits, the exclusion of outside of external ADUs, which we already have in town. I mean, there are people who live in apartments in buildings that are accessory dwell, accessory to the initial dwelling, we've got those all over the place in town. And so, um, is, I think it's just kind of a philosophical disagreement that, you know, we are, that I have with Alex Whiteside's this draft, um, which I said, you know, is, is great and incorporates a lot of the same things that I already had in mind, so that was great, but the, unfortunately, the sort of basic difference of opinion is on the, on the allowance for external, um, separate dwellings. So I think, as Melinda said, I think this is sort of an option that should be presented to town meeting and leave it to the legislative body in the town to decide whether that's something they want or don't want. And, um, and I think there are certainly changes that, um, have been suggested by Tim and by the building commissioner, which I would be making in a, um, another draft and sending that around, um, for consideration.
So, um, so thank you, Kathleen, I do have, um, I, I do have the notes from my meeting with Joe Prodeck.
And before you go into those notes, is it possible to pull up the draft just like we had for the, um, the last memory care? I mean, I have it, but if you want to share a screen with it, I think.
Um, Cheryl, I think it would be easier for you to do it because I'm gonna be referring to an email on my screen, so.
Oh, well, do you want me to see, well, it's not on that, I'd have to.
You have it, Kathleen, I can open it, I just don't have it open, so give me one second to open it.
I'd have to open it on a different thing.
While you're doing that, can I just ask a quick question, Kathleen?
Yeah.
When you, when you were talking about, I missed this, when you mentioned, um, the cap, did you say there is a cap of ten or it was in there but it's being pulled out or?
No, no, there, I put in, after conversations at the, the last time we talked about this, um, at the request of Denny, I, I put in a cap of ten.
Oh, okay.
Um, uh.
I'm sorry, um, Kathleen, is that draft entitled eleven oh nine?
Yes.
Okay. So I can do a screen share now.
Just real quick, um, just to finish that. Is, so what happens if we've got ten? And I don't, I mean, is there an opportunity for somebody? I don't know if there is ever a dire need to have one of these, but if there was a dire need for somebody to not wait, you know, six months or something because we meet up, met our cap, that they could bring it forth in some way, shape or form, or is it like?
They'd have to go to the building, you know, to the zoning board for a variance.
Okay, perfect, okay, so, but there is an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but it would be a request for a variance and you'd have to be demonstrating the hardship.
Right.
Um, the one thing that I had thought about as I was some, going through the building commissioner's comments and, um, Alex Whiteside's comments is that, um, uh, there are dwellings in, there are accessory dwellings that are throughout town that have sort of been here for a long time, either grandfathered or, you know, that's, they've always been this way and nobody's had a problem with them. And so I did have this amnesty provision in there, um, all along, because I really am concerned, I think we should be concerned about the fact that we want to make sure that these accessory dwelling units are code compliant, they're meeting the sanitary code, the health and safety, and there's no way to know that if they're, if they're illegal. Um, so if somebody comes in and to make a prior existing unit that's not been permitted um, and wants to come in under the amnesty provision, those would not be subject to the cap. So the cap would apply to new ones.
All right, makes sense. Yep, thank you.
So before Tim jumps into some details, would it be possible for me just to give a couple of statements? I went through and read the, um, the ARP, Accessory Dwelling Unit Model State Act and Local Ordinance, you know, so that's the, um.
Yeah.
You know, what we're talking about, right, so I sent the link up, but I'm not sure everyone would have had time to look through it, but, which is a few things I want to highlight from that. Um, because it, they're very broad and some of them might be a little bit specific, uh, but not as specific as Joe's, as Joe Prodeck's comments. So, um, they note that ADUs were relatively common before World War Two, but the explosive growth of suburbs after that war um, was governed by new zoning ordinances that almost exclusively reserved land in the suburbs for single-family housing for the middle-class nuclear family. And zoning in older communities was changed to prohibit ADUs and multifamily housing. And these regulations, along with other practices such as redlining, are reinforced racial, ethnic and economic segregation. I think this was some of what, um, Melinda was getting at in some of her comments. So with that background, they also noted that there's changing circumstances today that have strengthened the case for ADUs, including an aging population, unaffordable rents and home prices, the cost of care facilities being out of reach for many, uh, who need lower-cost housing uh, for family caregiving needs because they can't afford something like the memory care facility that we were just speaking about. Also, COVID has worsened disparities in affordability. Many people, older people have a inadequate retirement savings. And then if you move on to climate change, like I spoke about at our last meeting, infill development has climate change benefits. There's also, uh, today, according to this ARP report, there's increased awareness of systemic racism and class division that is embedded in single-family zoning. And there's a shift back to multi-generational households. But I think some of these things are, um, sort of broader than just like the topic of what should be, uh, should this be in the ADU or that be in the ADU? This is like, as Melinda said, is part of a solution to some broad, uh, issues that the Housing Protection Plan has addressed. And it says that the town needs to address more specifically, and, and this bylaw is one of the ways that they could be addressed. Um, and then just a couple of quick things. The ARP report does not recommend owner occupancy requirements. I know that's in all of these drafts, but I just want to point out that they see it as a fairness issue because our zoning or our other regs do not require single-family homes to be owner occupied, people can rent them as they wish. They also note that ADUs should be treating, treated as an equal type of housing, subject to the same set of rules that gather, govern other types of housing. Now, last meeting I mentioned, we don't have, um, any design standards for single-family homes except what's in the building, so just pretty, pretty limited, it's for safety generally. So they suggest that we shouldn't be putting more, more onerous or stricter requirements on ADUs than we do on our existing single-family housing stock. And then, um, they also said that the highly discretionary standards based on neighborhood character or quality can be serious obstacles to the construction of ADUs. But that's, those are things I pulled out of that.
Thank you. I mean, I think that, yeah, I mean, I think that many, the Cape Cod model points out the fact that, you know, owner occupancy is, is a hard thing to control, we had in this draft the requirement to submit an affidavit, that sort of thing. Um, uh, but even, uh, the building commissioner says, you know, that's, he was saying, well, why wouldn't you record something at the registry of deeds, you know, or something like that, but the registry won't accept um, certificates of occupancy or those kinds of things, you know, for recording, so I don't think that would work. Um, so it's always an idea to just drop the owner occupancy requirement altogether. I think we were sort of putting that in there as a way to kind of limit the number that we would get, but we already have a cap of ten per year that sort of addresses that situation anyway, so, um, I'm, you know, I wouldn't object to the idea.
I'm not proposing we take that out at the moment, but I think it's something that we should definitely pin and.
Yeah.
Talk about.
All right, um, all right, is there anyone else? Oh, yeah, Tim, Tim.
Sorry, I jumped in in front of Tim.
Yeah, no.
We want to hear that.
That, that, that's fine, Cheryl, I, I thought that was good, um, kind of general context for, for this sort of thing, and I think um, what you'll see in some of the building commissioner's comments, um, kind of reflect the kind of principle of kind of consistency and, and fairness among different kind of construction and, and building types. Um, there was a lot of concern about the building department's ability to, um, to review and, and, and process these things, so uh, we did think it was important to, to walk through, um, Kathleen's draft language with the building commissioner. Um, and so, you know, without, without speaking for him, I think you'll see, um, you know, in his comments that, um, there are some things that he would edit, there are things that he would strike. I don't think there's anything in here, and, you know, judging from my conversation with him, um, nothing in here that struck him as particularly onerous for his department, um, you know, and I think the changes that he's suggesting are things to make it so that, you know, the, they're, they're reviewing the same types of materials and the same types of construction. Um, the, the, a general recommendation that he had was that whether it's through this bylaw or some separate procedure, that the, the existing temporary apartment and the existing kind of garage, carriage house, caretaker zoning, um, the somehow sunsetted um, after all of those permits expire so that eventually all we'll have is one accessory dwelling unit by law that people are using, so we don't have these kind of multiple typologies under multiple different types of of authorizing, uh, legislation. So, um, and, and Cheryl, if you can kind of maneuver the, the, the scrolling here, the first comment that he had is in section E two. Which, which basically, um, you know, here's the, the, the use in the dimensional requirements and a, a, a fair number of his comments are in these sections. That, um, the, the, the term impact or adverse impact um, is, is too subjective, um, and that the bylaw should simply refer to the heightened setback requirements in the underlying zoning district. Um, the, the, the heightened setback requirements for a single-family house are there to protect abutting properties from height and, and bulk, um, on the property line. And so we don't need to have a kind of subjective standard for that, we can just kind of peg it to, um, the existing heightened setback requirements.
We're talking about this right here that I highlighted, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, number two, yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Section E three, um, he thought that, that, that section might be redundant. Um, the, the definition of ADU up top and then section C two already say that an ADU has to be in a single-family house. Um, I, I, I don't know if it harms anything to, to leave that, but he's, he's pretty good at pointing out things that are said multiple times.
He and I have similar interests in making zoning as short as possible. Think of the printing costs.
So there are two E fours. So he had a, um, he had a comment in this, the second E four, um, that starts with an ADU shall be clearly subordinate.
Well, the first E four was crossed out.
Yeah, um, I, I think hi- his, his, his issue with the second E four right there, which is now the only E four, because it has been crossed out, is to sort of add more explicit requirements that speak to the characteristics of a single-family house. That's a judgment call about, I mean, who's to say what a single-family house looks like? Um, you know.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of different types of houses out there. Um, and, and there are no similar requirements for additions or other work that kind of, you know, say, you know, the appearance on property and which is located remains out of a single-family residential property. Um, so, you know, either think about what is it that makes a single-family house look like a single-family house, and then we'll say, okay, do this, do this, this, or, or, or strike this, I think, you know, his, his.
Would his idea be, sorry, would his idea to be just lead? Would his idea be, sorry, would his idea to be just leaving the first sentence and cross out the second sentence?
I, 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 I think, I think that would work. And I, and I actually think that, um, you know, the, the thing that was struck out there. I mean, you know, one thing that makes a house look like a two-family house is having two doors. So if, if it's important that it looked like a single-family house, then maybe you don't want to have two doors in the front.
Yeah, it said that Alex Weiss, I pointed out, there's lots of houses around Milton that have two front door, um, two doors on the front.
Yep, so I, I, I think that kind of speaks to, um, what is a single-family house and what does it look like? So.
Yeah, that's the whole idea, I think I mentioned before too. We don't have anything like this for any of our other single-family building in town.
Well, yeah, that's right. If you're going to do in addition to your existing house, we don't have these kinds of requirements, so. I, so what if we just left the first sentence in and crossed out the second sentence?
Well, I mean, it seems to me if, if Joe feels as if he can make a determination pretty straightforwardly, the subordinate, then based on this, then there's not necessarily a lot of discretion there. I think that's what he wants. He doesn't want to have a lot of discretion. I've read through these and that's my takeaway from it.
Yeah.
But I think it goes to the whole point that this is making it more restrictive than any other single-family, uh, requirements in town. And why would we want to do, why would we want to do that is the question.
Right. Well, if you go, if you put an addition on a house, you would do it, you would go through, you know, if you needed a variance, which you would go through the ZBA, which brings in a public comment of, of the neighbors. And the design is part of that review process, which is why I think actually this should be going through the, um, the zoning board of appeals on, just as a gatekeeper on everything, but, oh, we can.
Yeah, I think, um, there's many more additions to get filled without ZBA requirements than, than, that require them. I think you could ask Joe for that number, but you know, there's, uh.
Yeah, he does.
You know, people can pull the permit for a single-family home without any review, as long as it needs zoning. And the zoning only addresses, you know, some of the dimensional requirements.
There's so many non, there's so many non-conforming structures in Milton that, oh, many, many do, because.
Well, we can get the figures, let's ask the building department.
And, and I think, I think Meredith, to that point, I mean, there's a kind of built-in, you know, if we're pegging the, the construction of an ADU to the underlying zoning requirements, if you've got a non-conforming house that doesn't meet the setbacks, it's going to be very difficult for you to build an ADU addition or a detached ADU that wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't be allowed to do that. You would, i- if you wanted to, you would need to get a variance, in which case, you know, now you're, you're, you're in that public hearing process. So I think the principle here is, you know, you want, you want things to be zoning compliant under the, the underlying zoning. The, the, the next, the next comment that Joe had, um, was section E six. And he just ki- kind of questioned, um, what the, what the principle behind not allowing access through the main house was. And then if, if that's.
That's a carryover from the, um, temporary, um, dwelling, the temporary apartment one?
No, you're required in those to have connection because you're required to take out, you're required to show that you can take out the ADU and it meant to be part of the main house.
Yeah.
Get both plans, so you're required the connection now.
I don't have any problem taking that out.
So, I mean, and, and that's, you know, again, if, if, if there's a concern about, you know, because I know we've been kind of debating, you know, should there be a family requirement, should be, you know, you know, who, who, who's going to, is it owner occupancy or not? I think, you know, if you were to have an ADU that required access through the main house, that's a kind of, a built-in limitation to who's potentially going to be a, a renter in that ADU. You know, you're going to be kind of.
I don't have a problem taking that out.
I'm sorry, which one was that? I'm not following, I think six, okay.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand, so what, what is it now? What is it being changed to?
It's just going to come out six.
So number six, the whole thing is going to come out?
Yeah.
And that, that means that the renter can come through the main house or will only be able to enter through their separate door?
They will be able to enter through, it's, it's assuming.
Yeah.
It's assuming that they will be able to enter through what the current entryway is.
Oh, okay, so they can enter through, a- and there could be an option, they could have their own door.
Yes.
So they could have one, they could have.
But it would be an existing door on the, or an addition, a new door.
Okay, okay, so it's optional.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, next is section E eight. Eight seems kind of duplicative of nine, and nine has much more detail. I don't know if eight or nine are saying different things.
No, I don't think so, yeah, we could, I mean, I, I, I saw his point, um, and, um, I think, yeah, I don't think it needs to be repeated. I think we just have the one off-street parking space. It's interesting, while I was listening to the, um, AARP session on, on ADUs, uh, a couple of weeks ago, a woman in, from, uh, I think Lexington or Arlington, uh, Arlington, um, was saying that they dropped all their parking requirements from, for ADUs, um, because they felt that, um, it was discriminatory, um, requiring the parking. They thought it was better to not have any parking requirements at all. But it may be that in that town, you can park overnight on the street, um, which we don't have. So, um, I think we do have to have some kind of a parking requirement.
Yeah, and I, I thi- I think Joe's next point, um, on section E nine, that it should, it should reference the existing zoning requirement that no more than thirty percent of the front setback can be parking.
Yep.
He questioned what to do with the house that has no parking spaces and is grandfathered from parking requirements because it was built prior to nineteen thirty-eight. That kind of strikes me as, um, let, let the Board of Appeal sort of, sort them out, I don't know. But the, 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 the final, the final comment that he had is that the, um, the screening requirement is workable, but that the, the last sentence should be struck. And you, you should, you should instead refer to or mimic or reference the language in section seven, eight, seven, um, which, which is, is the sort of design requirements for parking facilities, which again is, is applicable to other, you know, uh, development projects in town. I think it, it kind of covers the same things again, because it's, that's something that he's accustomed to enforcing and interpreting. Whereas, you know, the sufficiency to minimize the visual impact is.
Yeah, okay.
I got one concern on this one, um, on number nine. So, again, I'll just use an, my, an example of, you know, you've got an existing driveway. Let's say you can fit five cars in there and you've built an accessory dwelling or you've created an accessory dwelling. Why, why, so i- if I'm reading this right, I couldn't just say one of those spots, I'm covered because I've got a spot and one of those is going to be for the, you know, a sparking spot, because it seems like it doesn't have any. Like, it almost seems like the existing spot that you wouldn't have to build, I would now have to build some screening around it. Why would we want to do that? Like, I, I, I don't think, like, if you've got an existing spot that you're not creating, because you've already have enough room in your driveway, let's say, why would you need to then create screening around it? You're not, you're not building anything new.
You're adding, you're adding a density of additional vehicles, which impacts.
Potentially.
Neighborhood.
Not necessarily, I think.
Not necessarily, because you, if you've got a lot, like, so I'll use my drive. I could probably fit six or seven cars in my driveway i- if I wanted to. Um, I probably have two or three on any given day. Now, if one, uh, if my, my daughter moves out and I have one less car and, you know, somebody else moves into my accessory dwelling, I still have three. It's not a new space. Now, what I was thinking about this was, if I now, if I only had a, a space for one car in my driveway and I needed to create parking in, you know, then I would, it would make sense to me that I would need to screen for that. Because now I'm maybe building it closer to the edge of the property or building it on the other side of my property. I'd, I'd really have to think of how I'm doing it. I don't necessarily agree with the idea that if you've already got the space, you've now got maybe an in-law living with you, I now have to screen for a car. Because I could ask somebody to stay with me tomorrow for the next three months and they could park in my parking lot. You know what I mean? Like, I already have.
Yeah, so what if, what, Rich, what if we thought about saying that if you have to construct a new parking space, then you, to satisfy the requirements of this, uh, bylaw, that that would trigger the screening?
So, so that's where I was going. I don't know if everybody else would agree, but that's, I, I mean, I, I just don't think we need to put undue pressure on somebody building something that.
I guess what, what determines whether you need a new parking space or not? You know?
And what, yeah, what determines if you need screening too, I mean.
Well, again, I've got.
Well, you would, you would do the screening if you have to build a new parking space. And then going to Tim's question is what's the trigger for having to build a new parking space?
But I think that the whole question about doing the screening goes back to just similar to the building design. Is we have no other screening requirements for single-family homes. We only have screening requirements for multifamily commercial. So it's kind of putting another requirement on the ADU, just, you know, that we don't put on other comparable residences.
Probably not possible. I mean, look at the neighborhood, you've got houses pretty close together, if you, you know what I mean, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I couldn't, yeah, my mother.
Neighborhoods, right, right.
I could never put screening between my driveway and hers, because quite honestly, you wouldn't know where my driveway ends and hers begins. You know, unless you'd have to have a surveyor come out. I don't know, I, I just think if I can fit five cars in my lot today, and if I'm going to now have an ADU and I'm, I'm going to have one additional beyond my two or one, now I've got two. Why on earth would I need to now build screening that potentially I never needed before? And quite honestly, maybe I couldn't even fit.
Yeah, so, so, so just, just to sort of remind folks, the, um, the, the, the reference to section seven H seven that, that Joe is recommending is, is about screening in residential districts. Each parking area for more than five vehicles in a residence, double A, A, B, or C district shall be screened from the street at any lot of an adjoining owner with. Provide effective screening within three years from the date on which such shrub and trees are established. Uh, the use of vegetated berms may be used to provide screening. So it's not that you need to screen a new parking, if there's one parking space on site and you build a second, you wouldn't necessarily have to screen it. It's if you're, if you're building parking that exceeds, the parking area for more than five vehicles that you need to screen it. Um, and that's, and that's for all the residential districts.
Oh, so, so, so that would be your trigger if, if, if this ADU means that you pass the number five, or you, you pass actually four. If you get to five, then you have to screen.
Right.
Okay, and that's because you would have to for a single-family house, any.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so that's in any, in any, um, in, in any residential district. So I think one thing that we need to think about in this section is.
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt for a moment? I just got a, um, text message from someone who's trying to get into the meeting and it's not being admitted.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I just saw that, I got her in.
Okay, alright, sorry, thanks.
I think number nine, Tim, it conflicts though, because in one of those sentences, it, it says, at two outdoor park, uh, where there are more than two outdoor parking spaces, there should be evergreen or dense, uh, deciduous planting. So just, I, I would just say that we should, we got to reread this and just make sure those.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take, take a look at Joe, I mean, Joe made reference to that other section seven H. Um, so I'll go back to that and, and make sure that it's in line, this, this clause number nine.
Yeah, and, and so I, I think one thing to kind of think about as it relates to the parking, and, and maybe this is a question for kind of the submission requirements, is, you know, the parking plan for the house. You, you know, to, to, to demonstrate that here, here is the layout of the site. Here are the four parking spaces.
We have that in, um, that's already in, um, D six on the second page. Um, the application for a building permit, um, or a special permit shall include, you know, blah, 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 the site plan shall at a minimum show the footprint, the location of parking and driveways, um, square footage, square footage, and that sort of thing. So we've got that.
I, I think, I think maybe to like write something in there that kind of says, uh, uh, a, a plan that shows sufficient parking for all vehicles on site.
Okay.
So just to, just to get back to, to Joe's comments, they're, they're, they're almost all done. Section E ten, um, about under, underground utilities, strike it prohibitively expensive. No one would do it, um, very expensive. It'd be nice, but it's just, it's not going to, it's not going to fly. And then if it's possible to add a little bit more specificity to the, the dark sky standards, just so that, and, and this is kind of, you know, the typical, you know, what, what is the thing today? What is it called? And then, you know, or the equivalent in the future or whatever. Just that, you know, because I know, you know, dark sky means a lot of different things, but, you know, I, I know that they have kind of, you know, here's all the different types of fixtures that you can kind of use that, that meet it. So just a little bit more specificity on that for him. Were you, we're used to putting this in special permits and site plan approvals, so we just need to kind of add that specificity.
Yeah.
He, he'd asked me to check in with the engineering department on section eleven. Um, an ADU and principal dwelling shall share common septic wastewater and water service facilities. The town engineer says that this requirement is in line with our engineering and operations expectations. So that is okay.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have that many houses in Milton that use some, that have title five. But, y- you know, this language is designed to say, you know, if you've got a septic system for five bedrooms, you, you, you know, your ADU's got to fit in with that. You don't get to, you know, add on, you know, another thing that's not in compliance.
So, so section F is one that, um, we may need some additional clarity from Joe about this. Because, um, anyone that looks at this will say, well, duh, of course. Um, and when Joe, who is our, um, ADA enforcement guy, he's the strong arm of the law for the Disabilities Commission, um, actually got really fired up about this and says, you got to take it out. Uh, ramps for people with mobility devices are exempt from zoning requirements under forty A. Um, that's the state zoning enabling act, you cannot pass a zoning law that restricts someone. If, you know, you could put a ramp on your property line, um, if it's necessary to, um, to, to meet mobility requirements. Now, forty A doesn't necessarily cover elevators or chairlifts or, or whatever. But what Joe's kind of stance on this was, was that, um, you can't so explicitly carve out separate standards and requirements for people with disabilities in your zoning. Um, and so it's not that the intent of it is, is bad, but that, um.
Doesn't look good.
If, 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 if some, if someone needs relief to put a chairlift onto their house, they will get it. You know, but, but to sort of have special carved-out language for people with disposals, even if it provides an advantage, um, is, is not good. And so i- if, if, if anyone has specific questions about that, pass them along to me and I'll get them to Joe so he can kind of explain himself. But that was kind of the general gist of that, was that, um, you know, that the language needs to be the same for everybody.
Okay.
Um, and then Kathleen, you mentioned this a little bit earlier, um, and, and gave a little bit of color as to, you know, the, the possibility of, you know, the, the registry of deeds is the, the thing, they, they keep everything. I think everyone would rather have things at the registry than in a file folder in my office or Joe's office. But Kathleen, I mean, I, you know, to your comment earlier, um, I, you know, what, what, what can you record with the deed and whatnot?
Well, you know, as a, as a real estate attorney, who's been doing it for some time, I mean, mostly when I'm looking at somebody selling something that's got, you know, an apartment or, you know, this, an ADU, I've, you know, got that all the time. I'm, you know, I'm looking at the building jacket, I'm not going to the registry of deeds. Um, it's not a title issue, it's a, it's an occupancy issue. Um, and so, you know, in other towns, you can actually go online to the building department and read the jacket. The index card system that we have here is, um, is a little bit more complicated. But that's really where, that's where you would check. I mean, you're going to check the occupancy and that's never an issue. Is a little bit more complicated, but that's really where, that's where you would check. I mean, you're going to check the occupancy and that's never an issue that's at the registry of deeds.
But wasn't this a question of if it's at the registry of deeds, then. Uh, there's. That's a broad location for it in terms of the.
But lots of times the registry is not, you can't walk into the registry and just record anything unless, or you used to be able to if you got a drunk afternoon. At Suffolk County, you could record a, a laundry list if it was notarized, but that's not necessarily the case. I mean, I've, I've gone to the registry with documents and had them tell me that, no, they're not going to take them.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I, I think it's, I, I, I think it's just, you know, I, I, I don't think he's going to live or die on this hill. Um, but I think that he just wanted kind of additional kind of backup for, you know. And I think it speaks to the broader conversation of, you know, how do you, how do you determine and maintain and monitor and enforce owner occupancy?
Well, yeah, I mean, so that's the other question is to just sort of say, why, you know, do we drop the owner occupancy? And then we don't have this issue.
Well, I like what other towns do that you do have to have an affidavit every few years that you, that you maintain. Um, also when a property is sold, that you know that its owner occupied, um, that they have to reapply for the permit. I actually, that was one thing that Alex says that I really liked that I would like to, um, to add to yours.
No, I was going to put that in. I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah.
So, so, so that was it for Joe's comments, except again, um, you know, figuring out the best way to, to, to sunset the kind of existing temporary apartment. Bylaws, um, you know, as, as those, as those expire, you know, you're, you're eligible to apply for, you know, uh. An ADU under the new bylaw or, or something.
Yeah, which I maybe hadn't seen that in the draft, but if you keep going down on I. Right there.
That was a change maybe he hadn't seen.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, he, yeah, he was looking at the September twenty second draft. Um, this is later. So I think that, I think that probably does it.
Okay. Um, well, our goal was to end at nine thirty tonight. I don't think we're going to make it, but I just wanted to check in with, um. The rest of the planning board members. I would love to hear from the public as much as we can. Unless it is, if, if, if that's okay. I didn't know if anybody wanted to make a couple of comments or go right to the public.
Well, I just want to say that, um, yes, said, um, I will take a look in, you know, at Joe's comments. I've made notes. I'll send out another version to Tim to have him take a look. Um, and, um. Um, and, you know, I thank the people that had submitted comments, uh. Which were helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So if anyone from.
Let me just check in and at ten to make sure our time checks.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, I.
I'm not, I'm, cause I'm.
Oh, absolutely not. I, I, I think let's, let's say, um. Let's say we're extending our nine thirty, aiming to end by ten. How's that? All right. And.
Can we get, um, Danny, can we get a sense of how many people, like just ask them to raise their hands if they think they might want to speak tonight, just so we get a sense?
Yes, and, and all are welcome to speak. Right now we only have one hand raised, so I don't know how many people we will have. Oh, no, we've got two. Uh, okay. So we have two people who have raised hands. So.
Okay.
All right. Okay. All right. Um, hello, Mr. Whiteside. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Whiteside. Welcome to join us.
Do you want me to keep this up or should I stop the screen share?
Could you stop this screen there?
Yes.
Hello, Alex. Well, good evening.
Oh, good evening. Uh. I, uh. I, I think that, uh, uh. My principal problem with what you're proposing is you're proposing to do something as of right. Rather than with a special permit. And. Doing it as of right means that none of the neighbors get any notice of what you're doing. Uh, none of the neighbors get any right to say anything to anyone about what you're doing. And. The building commissioner. Issues this building permit for something that no one knows anything about. And. This is contrary to what we currently do. Currently, the, um, accessory apartment by law, which the housing production plan said was supposed to be amended, not thrown away. Amended says that you need a special permit. And a special permit says that when you want to do something like adding an accessory dwelling unit. You've got to give your neighbors notice. You've got to tell them what you're going to do. And there has to be a hearing. And then the. Permit granting authority has to consider. What the neighbors say, what the applicant says, and come out with a just plan. And to suggest that there are no issues, there are no issues with an accessory dwelling unit. And that it can be ran through without notice or hearing is, is just wrong. And it's not the way we do things in Milton. It just isn't. It's wrong. I have submitted. A zoning article which. Preserves the special permit provision. That we have in our current. Bylaw. People have said, well, no one, when we build a single family house, no one has to, uh. Um, go get permission. And that's because the house is built under the subdivision control law. And the subdivision control law doesn't allow it. You can't do it under the special, under the subdivision control law. However. If it's a special permit provision like Walcott Woods, where all the single family houses. Have been approved as to their design. It happens all the time, except where the law prohibits it. And to say that, uh, uh, well. We don't care. We shouldn't care what the design of an accessory dwelling unit is, is, is a terrible mistake. It's important. I mean, uh, especially if you allow these, uh, accessory dwelling units to be in separate buildings. These will be little cottages or possibly they'll be in a garage. Uh, but what they look like is important, whether they, you know, they. Cut down a wooded area in the back of the lot in order to put this little cottage in is, uh. Is of interest to the neighbors. It's something they should know about. And there's something, and something they should be heard about. There are all kinds of things. And I mean, if the garage is five feet from a, from a neighboring dwelling. Doesn't the neighbor have some right to get he heard about it? Also. In the current zoning. There are no setbacks provided for these things. Are they going to be just treated like accessory buildings? Or are they going to be treated like single family houses? That's something that has to be done. I mean. To say that, you know, a lot of poor people need an easy procedure to. Build an accessory dwelling unit is, is not a, a good argument. The people who own houses in Milton. Should have a good procedure which they follow in order to add a unit and they should. Receive a quality product and their neighbors should be entitled to have them receive it. So I have submitted a, uh. An entirely different. Zoning proposal. And it's, uh. Six pages long. It provides for a rigorous special permit process. It provides for enforcement. It provides for termination where there is a violation. It provides all the things that are needed for a successful housing program. And this is a housing program. It also provides for a ten unit limit. And. The current, your, the, the proposal the board has been discussing says. No more than ten building permits will be issued. And the zoning is going to say this, building inspector, don't issue more than ten building permits. I don't think that this is legal. I don't think that that zoning provision would withstand legal scrutiny. And the ten, ten unit limit is extremely important because without a limit. You're going to get a lot of units, quite, quite possibly. I would like to be able to discuss with someone, I. I'd like to be able to discuss with the board my. Six-page summary. But since you're going to stop. Within half an hour, I don't have time. Uh, but I would, I would ask the board to at least read what I suggest. And. If you go forward with an as of right proposal, ADU proposal, I think that there will be a, a. Alternative special permit proposal put before the town meeting because. I'm quite sure, quite sure that the town meeting is going to want. The residents of the town to know what's going on. So, uh.
Uh, well, thank, thank.
I'm not, I'm not going to describe the, uh, uh, what I proposed because people haven't read it and it isn't on the screen and, uh.
Well, Alex, actually, um, Mr. Whiteside, thank, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, you know, normally we have a three-minute limit, but given that you've served on the board for thirty-two years. I, I, I did, if, if I could, I did want to just talk to you a little bit. I did read through. Um, your, um, version, uh, your potential article. Um, and I, I did notice, um, if, if you have yours in front of you. Um, I was curious in, in section B, you have the description. And you describe it, its outward appearance is that of a single family dwelling. Shall be an existing legally compliant, non-conforming, single family dwelling with one or more zoning nonconformities. Um, sorry, I'm mumbling here, but, um. You, you explain it's. It shall re- retain its identity as a single family dwelling for the purpose of this by law. And shall not be considered a two-family house. So I, I was just curious about that. We would in effect be getting two units, right? So it'd be a single family house, but it would be con- considered two units. Would that, would that have an impact on the SHI?
I don't believe, I, I believe these units will be, um, counted on the subsidized housing inventory. And since none of them is going to be affordable, it's going to increase the number of affordable units the town is otherwise going to have to produce. But my proposal, um, is that the accessory dwelling unit be contained. In the existing house. Or i- in the existing single family house or in an addition to the house that's connected to it. And not in a separate building. It would be possible, I mean, if there were. Uh, if people really said, well, we need to have a single, a, a separate building. Provision, it could be provided, but once again, there have to be rules. It has to be, there have to be standards for this because, uh. Building, y- you, you know, this is, this is something that's going to impact the neighbors and, and it could be extremely. Extremely, uh, um. detrimental to them. So, um, in any event, um, um, the, uh.
Okay.
And what I deal with is a single family house, but it could be expanded to. To a separate building if necessary. Uh, and the appearance of a single family houses is. Difficult to define, but if there is a hearing before a fact finder. Uh, the fact finder can determine the issue.
Okay, okay. Um, and I noticed under C one, um. You're, you're saying the lot on which an access, an ADU will be located shall be of adequate size and configuration. And the placement of the single family dwelling on the lot shall be suitable to permit the addition of an ADU to the single family dwelling. Without likelihood of adverse impact on abutting properties or the residents. Um, and that's. And that would be, go ahead, Cheryl.
I'm just like that requirement. And I, I look at the subdivisions that we have and. That we have to approve and we don't get to approve the houses like over on Pleasant Street. Where the houses are so monstrous for the size of the lots. Now we're going to put a restriction on a small ADU. And yet we allow, we, we don't have anything. We just have to let those things go through. And we're getting what? Five houses over there where it should be one because it met all the subdivision requirements. You know? I just want to point that out. We can continue to discuss.
Yeah. No, I think, I think we have struggled with the subdivision. We, we, we felt like we had our hands tied there and there's been a lot of. It's been a lot of noise issues over there and a lot of real problems over there. I, I hear what you're saying. Um, but, um, but I, I don't mean to keep you, Alex, but I, I thought that. So the way that you would deal with the likelihood of any adverse impacts on the abutting. Properties would, would be that hearing. Is that what I'm understanding? That public hearing before the ZBA is, is, is the, um. Is your approach to dealing with adverse impacts?
If it became an issue, the ZBA would determine the issue and the CBA are a smart group of people. And they would determine it well.
Yeah, okay.
But Mr. Whiteside, you know, you can do an addition on your house. Without having to go to the ZBA. I can have seventeen kids move in.
If you, if, if you put the addition on before you apply for the ADU, you can do it. If you want to do it with the application for the ADU. You've, you've got to get, you've got to go to the CPA because you can put the addition on before you apply for the ADU. And fine, and then apply for the ADU. It's not, it's not hard.
I think, uh, what Kathleen made, just like I referenced earlier, is that anybody can do an addition to their home without getting any neighborhood input or. Uh, other review, as long as it's zoning compliant. It just goes to the building department and if it meets the building code and it meets zoning, they issue the permits. And you won't get notice that they're going to start construction or start demo or anything. They're just going to start one day and the hammers and backos will be there. You know, so it's, that's. You know, anyway, it's kind of what I referenced before about imposing which, that kind of, uh, requirements on these that we don't have on other kinds of, um. Single families.
You're actually.
Another hand up by, um, Carolyn Cahill.
Uh, okay. Um, all right. Um, Mr. Whiteside, I think we're going to have to say to be continued, um, because. It's an eight-page document and I do want to hear more from you. And I'm sorry, our meeting is so short and thank you so much for sending that to us and, and to be continued. Um, thank you, Mr. Whiteside.
When will our next, when will our next meeting on this be? I just wanted to, for people to know.
Um, I'm afraid we're, we're going to be pretty jammed on the twenty-third and it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Um, I think we might have to come up with another, um, meeting date, but let's hear from Ms. Cahill because. Well, okay. Well, let's hear from Ms. Cahill and we can discuss our schedule afterward, but I, I want to let her go home and. Go to bed like I'm sure a lot of people want to. Uh, Ms. Cahill, uh, good evening.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, thanks for letting me jump on. I, um, saw that you guys were going to be discussing the ADUs. And so I just wanted to offer, um, some input from, uh, the. Real estate, what I'm seeing in Milton right now, and that is a lot of families asking me about finding. That in-law setup for their aging parents. a lot of families asking me about finding that in-law setup for their aging parents and very little inventory allows that. And so the ADU to me seems like a nice opportunity for people who want their parents to be able to age at home, gives them that opportunity. I have clients right now that have family that tends to visit from another country, and so when they come, they come from, for, you know, a couple of months, and so their solution right now is to find a house with a finished basement that, you know, their parents can visit down there. And so again, being able to provide adequate living space for families, I think, is important to the town. And, uh, the last thing I just wanted to add, actually Cheryl answered the question I had, which is, you know, if someone was going to do an addition on their house, they would have to follow the zoning guidelines and if I'm not mistaken, they, in that instance, they would not have to ask their neighbors' permission or put that out to their neighbors. Correct?
True. I, I thi- I think they
It's complied with the zoning, you're right. They don't have to.
It complies with the zoning, if it's, as long as you're not non-conforming, so. Um, all right. Thank you, Ms. Cahill. Thank you for joining us. Uh, okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this article tonight? From the public? Um, okay. All right. All right, well, I guess we could hear from the board now. Does anyone from the board want to speak to this article who hasn't spoken yet? Um, Meredith or Rich?
I, um, I had a few comments, I just, just overall, just very general for, just for us to all think about and, and, um, you know, be able to have a conversation on later at one point. I see the, um, the by right use versus going through a special permit more on, um, not only, well, inviting the neighbors in. I, I think, I think the reason why you would want to notify and have a public process is you're changing the use of, of a single-family home. So you're changing a use, you're, you're, you will have a, a new family or a new person, somebody new. You'll have new vehicles coming in. It's, it's changing the overall use of the property and putting more more density, more pressure on, on a single-family home. And I just think the outcome could be better. Um, I know if, I, I really do believe that the residents of Milton are going to want to have an opportunity for neighbors to be aware when this is, when this is being applied for. And I think it's better for the, the applicant that they have an opportunity to share with their neighbors. This is how it's going to be, whether it's an internal building, external building. This, there will be somebody else who will be living here rather than just having somebody show up, a new vehicle, someone who, you know, they, they just don't know what's happened and all of a sudden there's, they're, they're seeing a new neighbor that they didn't know was there. I think it's a neighborly thing to do, to have a public process, and I think it could make actually it, um, things work actually a little bit more smoothly. Um, so I do think the public process, um, is, is important. Part of, some of the things that I'm concerned about is enforcement. Um, how do you enforce this? Um, and I think, uh, Kathleen, you actually stated that you, you know, that documentation would be, have to be provided and that it would be updated, you know, every so many years. And at the time when there was a sale of the property, that it would be, uh, they could transfer the property, you know, they could transfer, but they would, the new, um, resident would have to also apply.
They have to do the same sort of owner affidavit that the existing owner does.
Right, exactly.
The house gets sold, they'd have to supply that same statement.
Yep, and then, um, yes, because how would the building commissioner determine that to maintain the occupancy requirements without this? So that, that's perfect. The, um, pre-existing legal units, um, this is something I just, I think we can address. I don't know if we know how many temporary apartments we currently have in town, but I am, you know, if we only have ten new special permits, but we're allowing the building department, if we're allowing these to roll over all the existing temporary apartments, units, I'm concerned about the transition from those to becoming ADU and not really adding a significant number to our, our, um, to our unit count and really throwing off our, our, our goal in getting to a ten percent.
Seriously, yeah, so Meredith, I can, I just said, yeah, just, I'm looking at the clock. Um, I would put, I did put in that amnesty units would not be subject to that cap of ten. And I can put in the same thing for the temporary apartments when their special permits expire, that that doesn't count, that it's only for new units that are being created, is the ten, the ten-unit cap. Um, and I know this discussion about the SHI, it goes on and on and on and on, but you know, the thing is, you have to remember that we spent thirty years never doing affordable housing and now all of a sudden the SHI is a huge issue. Um, and there are other people that need to be served besides the eighty percent of area median income. As Carolyn said, you know, people who want to put their, have their parents, their grandparents, you know, share, sharing, you know, this property and, and, you know, disabled child living in, with you, that's, as in.
So that was, so that was, so was, I, what I was going to say is the way, what Alex suggested is how we transition this and we do it in a way that, um, doesn't overwhelm us is that we allow the temporary, our, our current bylaw to remain in existence, meaning we don't eliminate it because then those, those temporary apartments are then not technically legal. They're, they're, they're not under any jurisdiction. If, if we eliminate, if we eliminate that.
There's nothing in the bylaw, there's, this is a new provision. It's leaving the temporary apartments where they are.
So what Joe Prandak suggested, though, that they be, those provisions be removed and that these get grandfathered or moved in. I don't know those grandfathers.
Yeah, but we didn't do that.
Okay, I'm afraid we're going to have to take turns. So if we could, if we could let Meredith finish her point and then we'll let Kathleen respond, if that's okay. Why don't you go ahead and make your points, Meredith?
I just was going to say, so if we allow those to remain as temporary on an ongoing basis, that's, that would not, that would lessen that impact, um, certainly. Um, the only other, I think the thing that I wanted to comment on is really, um, I, I loved Alex, what he put in the sale of the premises, you know, detailing that. But the process of the violation, I think it's really important that we, that we're, um, that we are as clear as possible on, on that process. So if there is an issue with the building department and he has to have enforcement, I think we're covering ourselves as a town, um, if we can be as detailed, and I really did like what Alex wrote as far as how that process would work, the consequences, the penalties. Um, it was a real detailed, um, and I think we could, we could add that language.
I agree.
And, yes, great. Um, so I think there's things that we can, that, oh, there's a lot of overlap here and I think there's, um, a lot of ways that we can, we can work with, um, but I do, I do absolutely feel like that this should be a public, an ADU should be, um, it, it should go through a public process, so.
Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to chime in. I'm sorry, Kathleen, did you want to respond to her? Did you want to hear my points too?
I just wanted to say that, I just said, there were many provisions of Alex's draft that were helpful. There were lots of them that were repeats of what we already had, and so the enforcement provisions I thought were good and, and I would certainly be willing, you know, I was going to plan on putting them into the next draft anyway.
Thank you.
And made a note to that effect.
Okay, um, so, you know, I, I appreciate that Kathleen, Kathleen's article wants to make it easy for the applicants. I, I share some of Meredith's concerns and Alex's points, um, and, and just sort of believe that when you do a town-wide zoning article, as-of-right doesn't allow any opportunity to weigh relevant factors. It's not about neighbors giving permission. It's not this, it's not, it's not like that. It's, n- neighbors can e- explain any concerns, you know, there's, uh, you know, um, we, we hear them all the time. A neighbor across the street said, I'm concerned about headlights. If you put a driveway there, could you put some screening there or here? You know, so I, I thought what was significant about Alex's proposed article is that it just has, you know, thoughtful language for enforcement. Um, it calls for the open hearing before the ZBA. Um, so depending on the neighborhood, neighbor, neighbors can convey any challenges um, related to parking buffer, safety, um, or a potential unanticipated impact. Because you can't think of every single impact in the whole town. You can't include those in, in the, in general zoning. Right? So that's why you have this fail-safe option of a, of a fifteen-minute hearing um, with lawyers on the ZBA. So, so issues could be addressed, explained or mitigated quickly before the ZBA. I did take a peek. Um, Meredith had mentioned a meeting of the ZBA and I thought it was very effective. It was a fifteen-minute um, meeting and, and these, this lovely family got to add a relative and it all worked out. It was quite nice television. Um, it just seems like a nice way to ensure the opportunity for accessory dwelling units, but not at the cost of ignoring significant issues that could apply in individual or particular instances. So, um, so that's, um, that's where, just a couple of my thoughts, but, um, we'll see, so. Um, so did, did Rich, did you want? Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah.
I just want to point out one thing, guys, on the, uh, sorry, we're just on that comment about the fifteen minutes. You know, I think I've mentioned to you folks before that I've been involved with a few ADUs. And, um, you know, given the ZBA's current workload, um, one took at least a year. Um, and because you have to, I'll tell you the process. You file for, um, with the building department and you wait for the building department to get to the review. And then they issue a denial letter, which triggers to send it to the Board of Appeal. And then you have to have the plans ready to file with the Board of Appeal and you, you request to get uh, on their agenda. And so that can take months and months and months of time. Then there's an appeal period, uh, which you have to wait for before you can file for the building permit. And so the family I work with took eighteen months, this last one. And the market condition changed quite a bit in that eighteen months. The cost of lumber went up ex- extraordinarily. Some of that's come back down a little bit, but it's not an easy fifteen-minute process, is what I want to point out. Most of them need to hire an attorney um, and an architect. Um, and so, um, and probably, and a surveyor, because you need a surveyor to show where this, uh, is going to go. So it's not an inexpensive process either. So I just, I just want to make that clarification.
All right, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Beeler.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my throat bothered me so if I. So, uh, the only comment that I'd make is, and I'm trying to find the one Meredith, um, Danny, you and Meredith were just talking about, uh, that, um, Alex brought up. It's going to the ZBA so that neighbors can have a voice. I guess the, I'm trying to dial into that, the voice, because you mentioned it's not, it's not to stop, but it's to, to weigh in. And so like, you know, there's in my, and I'm sure there's a zillion different types of projects, but I'm, I'll narrow it down to two, right? I want to, um, change over my ba- I think, um, Carolyn mentioned, you change over your basement or something. You've got like an in-law living in your basement and a finished basement or something like that, right? In that case, I, I mean, I don't mean this, I don't want to sound bad, but like, I don't know that my neighbors need to know who's living like my family members has moved in my basement, or I'm having my daughter move back home, or, you know, I'm going to have a relative live there and I've got an extra car. Like, I don't think anybody needs to weigh in on that. However, if, if I was going to build on the side of my house, an extra, you know, thousand square feet or five hundred square feet, and now I'm encroaching into like the setbacks, I mean, that's going to go, I would imagine that would need to go to the ZBA anyway, and people are going to get to weigh in. And so I guess, because I'm not saying I don't agree with what you're saying. I'm trying to figure out what, the scenario that I would, that would make sense to me that you wouldn't want to put that in the paper and have somebody weigh in on it, because in my, my, um, example, I'm not going to add on to my house, maybe I'm going to do some construction inside to, to make an in-law apartment. I don't think really anybody would need to weigh in on that because what's, for what, right? There's not really, I'm not doing anything that's going to affect the neighbor. However, if I'm going to build on and now I'm encroaching into property lines, or I mean setbacks, absolutely, I think somebody should, you know, the neighbors and, and the abutters need to, need to know what I'm doing.
So I think, um, Kathleen, if, just to make sure, Rich, um, is clear about it and I'm clear about it. Currently, the way you have this current draft is it's only as-of-right, if it's within the existing house, no addition and not detached, right?
Right. And it has to comply with the existing setbacks, you know, you can't.
So if you're doing an addition, or if you're proposing a detachment, that automatically goes to a special permit process with, with the way this current draft is, right?
Um, if it's in, no, I mean, it's an external unit. If it's outs, it's a built separate building, it goes to a special permit. I'll take a look to see about the, um, internal ones.
My recollection was internal does not, that's the only one that was as-of-right as if it was internal, but maybe I'm remembering incorrectly.
No, it is. It's internal is only, are the only ones that are as-of-right. Um, so any of the applications have to show, you know, what you're planning on doing. Um, so.
So the moment you start building on?
But if you, if you put an addition on and it's, it's, you don't need a variance if it's within the zoning, then you would not need, that would be by right. That would not be.
That's true.
So you.
So, uh, so if I put an addition on the back of my house, regardless whether I'm doing an ADU or not, it would, I wouldn't need to. And what we're saying, and so what you're saying is, but if I'm doing it for the use of an ADU, that it would make more sense to have that process, so. So folks.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, as I said, there are people in my neighborhood, I know from the fact that have put it, have had apartments on the third floors of their houses. Um, they've never asked me whether that was okay. Um, you know, they put in a bathroom and rented it out and there's another car, there's another person. Um, and, and I don't have anything to say about that.
I just want to point out in, in D four, it says ADUs shall not be eligible for zoning experiences or for zoning dimensional variance relief. So they're not even allowed in this, where they're allowed in an addition for in a house that's not an ADU. So the procedural, which is D is where it talks about what's as-of-right. And so it says an ADU within a single-family building shall be permitted as a by right use accessory to a lawful, single-family dwelling use. But does, it's not saying specifically about whether you're doing an addition and you're putting it in.
That doesn't sound like you are doing an addition, right? That sounds just existing.
That's the way I've interpreted it, but maybe it's not really that clear.
Cheryl, if you go back, if you go back to the definition, you know, accessory dwelling unit within a lawful principal, single-family dwelling subordinate in size to the principal dwelling unit and separated from it in a manner that maintains the appearance of the entire structure as a single-family dwelling. I think that presumes an addition that
That does.
still maintains the same family.
So why not, why not then edit that language so that it is just within? And then if somebody was going to be adding on to your house, then or a certain square footage beyond, I don't know. That way, I, I mean, you see what I'm trying to do here is find accommodate both sides.
Yeah, so, so, so just for, just for kind of context, um, I, I worked in the, with the Housing Innovation Lab in City of Boston when they were working on their own ADU pilot. And the way that they, the way that they structured the, the, the initial pilot was, everything was into there, so there are no additions, no detached structures. Um, so it was either your, you know, your attic, your basement, carve out extra space. Um, so that, you know, there is, you know, there's, there's, there's precedent for that sort of thing. You know, I, I, I think you would want to kind of think critically about, well, you know, if you need to kind of put a bay window out the side, you know, to accommodate something, do you consider that to be an addition or, uh, or do you want to be just strictly, you know, within the four walls of the, of the existing structure? Uh, or do you want to be just strictly, you know, within the four walls of the, of the existing structure? So, um. I, I. Just my, my two cents, I think, you know, we have, we have heightened setback requirements that are meant to protect. Abutters from buildings. So if you're compliant, you, you should be good. Um, but if there are other considerations there, um, there's, there's precedent for that elsewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen some crazy things happen even though there are setbacks. I, I don't know. I, so I could go both ways, but it sounds like. Maybe if you crafted the language so that, I mean, let's. I, I mean, I wouldn't want to go crazy to say you couldn't put a new window in. Heck, even if you had to bump out a wall or something, I, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal. But if you were gonna add on, you know, seven hundred square feet to the back of your building, even. If it was within, I mean, yeah, maybe you do need some sort of a process. I don't know. I, I don't know what others think about that, but.
Well, going to Meredith's point, is it about the fact that there's so many buildings in Milton that are non-compliant and with zoning? Is that, it does say that it has to be a lawful, single-family use. So dwelling, so if you were adding something on, you're already, then you're already sit, you're. You're hitting a situation where if you're doing an addition on, on a building that's not in compliance with zoning, you are gonna have to get. Relief from, for a special permit. Even if, if, if you're not, if you're putting in a unit in your house and there's no, you know, there's no addition being added. Um, you, there, it's totally lawful and you should be able to do that. If, once you've got a situation where I'm putting on a wing, I'm gonna then have to be before the, the zoning board.
Because. On, I see. Well, on that note, um, we're passing ten o'clock, um, now. And, uh, we all promised we were gonna do nine thirty, but I feel like it was a very important discussion. So I'm glad we got to have that. Our next planning board m- meeting is the twenty-third. Then we have Thanksgiving. Um, the following week, I think our planning board meeting is December second. And I've just learned that Meredith cannot make it on December second. Um, she's a conflict. Um, how, uh, would, uh, would people consider December third, November thirtieth? I'm sorry. Tuesday, November thirtieth. Um. As our meeting, so we'd have the twenty-third and then November thirtieth. Um, that works. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Danny.
Yeah.
Um. We've already got a public hearing scheduled for December second because the planning board had agreed that it's.
Okay.
Be on December second.
Okay, well, we'll just be one member short. Is that gonna be a problem? Uh, which public hearing is it? I forget.
So we, we, we got a scenic road application on Hill.
Okay, okay.
I had to, I had to process.
I'm, I know, I'm sorry, that, that's, okay, so we're gonna keep our meeting on the second PB, okay? All right, um, okay, I might be in touch to schedule more planning board meetings, um, but I think. We're all a little bit tired right now, so, um, so let's keep the twenty-third and let's keep December second. I'm gonna, um, call Tim and work on schedule tomorrow.
And what's the timing? Sorry, that this would need to be wrapped up by?
Oh, oh, okay, so, yeah, um. That, I, I think if we're gonna be meeting weekly, we're, we're gonna aim for seven to nine, but, I, I mean, we're getting. We're, we're getting.
I think he's talking about calendar.
Oh, yeah, calendar, no, I just.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, so November twenty-third, it's Tuesday, seven PM, and then December second.
But we would, to Tim's point earlier about the public hearings for the zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, same applies here, right?
Mm-hmm. Those will be the sixteenth, right? Those, that public hearing?
Yep.
That, that's, that's the earliest we can do them at this point.
All right, so PB, seven PM, okay, all right.
Suggest if, if, if we felt on one of those meetings, we needed a little more time, whether anybody could start at six thirty. Um, as an option to wrap a half hour.
I, I think that's probably a good idea on the second, on the twenty-third, it's Thanksgiving week and I. I can't, I can't do that, but thank you. I think that's a good idea. Um, okay, all right, we got a lot done tonight. Um. I will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Yes, and I finished my needlepoint, yeah.
Oh, you did, let's see.
Excellent. Do, uh, will we be doing all of them on Zoom?
Huh? Oh, yes. Tam, is there any update? Is it at, at all possible to go back to the town hall and take off our masks?
No.
Numbers are going up, okay. That's too bad. Okay. All right, well, I just want to thank all of the public for tuning in and, and joining us and participating. Um, and thank you, planning board. We are chugging along here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Make a motion. Okay, all in favor, Meredith Hall?
I, yes.
Richard Beeler.
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias, is she gone?
No, I'm here, yes.
Okay, Kathleen?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Good night, everyone.